All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the DeKalb City Council regular meeting of March 28, 2022 to order. Recording Secretary Ruth Scott, roll call please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith? Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven yes?
Thank you. And going forward, since the ordinance allows us, Ruth, to have you call the roll on all votes going forward this meeting and future meetings, I'm just gonna have you go ahead and take the roll for us.
Okay.
All right, moving on to pledge of allegiance, Agenda Item B. Michael Embry, would you come forward and please lead us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Embry. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C. I would take, or I'd ask for a motion to amend the agenda in order to add an executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in five ILCS 120/2, C1.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Oh, Ruth, roll call please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, appreciate that. And then I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, the agenda has been approved. Now moving on to presentations. First, I got a proclamation I wanna read, observing the 50th anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program. So whereas, since 1972, the National Senior Nutrition Program has funded local agencies and organizations to serve home-delivered and congregate meals that help to ensure older adults have opportunities to stay healthy, independent, and connected. And whereas, more than 10 million older Americans face hunger each year. And whereas, local senior nutrition programs help older adults access healthy foods, nutrition screening, education, and counseling, social opportunities, and other supports that encourage well-being. And whereas, our local senior nutrition provider, the Voluntary Action Center of Northern Illinois, is an integral part of the City of DeKalb, providing sustenance and so much more to our older community members, especially those most vulnerable to food insecurity, chronic health conditions, and social isolation. And whereas, Voluntary Action Center's Meals on Wheels program is having a positive impact on our community and its senior members, preparing and delivering more than 78,370 home-delivered meals to 575 local residents in 2021, mobilizing the generosity of thousands of local volunteers through the years, and helping citizens become involved in meaningful service to others, and enlisting the support of other local nonprofit agencies and organizations who respond with gifts and donations to improve the lives of our seniors. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim March 2022 to be the 50th anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program and recognize this Cohen sides with the 48th anniversary of Voluntary Action Center, and urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them through nutrition services as essential contributors to the strength of our community. Fantastic. How about a round of applause for back? All right, now I got a particularly exciting one here. I'm gonna welcome some guests from T-Mobile for a hometown grant check presentation. This is item number two. So representatives from T-Mobile will present a $50,000 check to the City of DeKalb as the winner of a hometown grant. The grant pursued by the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission will fund a three-year public arts program to create works of art in DeKalb. Mr. Hoy, who is Chair of the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes. Well, it is indeed a great day in the City of DeKalb, and I'm about as excited, maybe more excited than I was maybe two or three weeks ago when Scott, Zach, informed me that the City of DeKalb is a recipient, one of five recipients across the country of the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program. Very, very excited. I have to thank also the support of the City Council and the City of DeKalb for all that they've done in support of the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. We put together, as you remember, the policy with the bureau policy, and we've been looking for projects to, for public art for the last several years, and really looking for opportunities to fund many of those projects. We've had a few people step forward with ideas. Obviously, we have a very good one right now with the Paint a Plug program. So that increases in popularity every year, and then we have OC Creative stepping up with an additional $50 to make it $100 to make that possible. But nothing like the one that we've had here with T-Mobile. So at this time, I wanna thank T-Mobile for all that they've done, for their generosity, and for their support. And we're very, very excited to be a recipient of this grant. And I'd like to introduce Kristen Matthews from T-Mobile to tell us a little bit about it. And also, she has a great big check for us.
And we'd love to hear from you real quick, and then we'll all come down and get a great photo op for you on this.
I'm Kristen Matthews. I'm the Marketing Manager for the State of Illinois with T-Mobile. And we started this program two years ago to provide and give back to communities across the United States. And I'm beyond excited, because I live in Plainfield, I'm very local, where I will be presenting a $50,000 check to the City of DeKalb to help you with your grants and any of the new programs that you have coming forth as part of our hometown grant makeover. So we're very excited for the City of DeKalb, and congratulations.
That's awesome. Council, if you don't mind, let's go down and get a photo op. And all members of the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, if you wanna come forward and be a part of the photo op, that would be fantastic.
Do you wanna bring the pink banner forward so we can all?
Yeah, let's slide this forward, and then we can all have great ideas.
Well, thank you, T-Mobile team. I was just telling them that we'll definitely invite them out for all the presentations and dedications of all the murals that we have. Super excited, and it's great to have partners like that in their community, helping us fund, just such a wonderful program that we've got out there. And thank you to all the members of the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission. You guys are just crushing it. You keep coming up with ideas, but more importantly, you keep executing, which is wonderful. And then to go outside and find dollars outside of the community that isn't taxpayer dollars to contribute towards our art program and our community, to bring more pride and allow people to make that emotional connection, that's awesome. So thank you for everything that you guys do as well. All right. And T-Mobile, you can stay if you want, but it is not, we were not offended at all if you leave. It's no problem at all. It's up to you. All right, let's see here. All right, I just need to make a memo here so I don't forget. All right, beautiful. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, public participation. I've got a couple requests for specific agenda items, but nothing else. So moving on to appointments, Agenda Item F, we have none. And then moving on to Agenda Item G, approval of the minutes. Agenda Item number one, minutes submitted by the city clerk. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Discussion. Alderwoman Larson.
I was going through the minutes when I was doing my homework yesterday, and besides being sparse, which they've been in the past, they're incorrect. Councilman Smith was absent and was noted as being absent at the beginning of the meeting, but halfway through the meeting, he started voting somehow. So the votes are wrong. There's ones that there's no votes at all. And so, and I know there's a little disclaimer at the end that you could look for more information on YouTube, and that's great, as long as YouTube wants to put it out there, and somebody 20 years down the road that might wanna look, it's still there. But there's no, there was nothing about the discussion of why we voted on something. And we had some lively discussion on this topic about extending liquor and gaming licenses. And so to not have a written copy, I'm having a real issue with accepting these minutes.
I agree. And we've worked with the clerk numerous times on what we would like to see as council, and it doesn't happen. And I agree on your comment on YouTube. Google used to have a social media platform called Google Plus, and then one day they decided they're not gonna do Google Plus anymore. So what's to prevent YouTube from deciding they're no longer gonna have recordings of government minutes, because they wanna distance themselves from stuff like that? So I agree with her as well. I don't know if there's any other comments? Yeah, Alderwoman Morris?
I guess for the public, I want to note that the value of the notes as recorded by the clerk exists to form the history of our community as we make it. And with an inaccurate record created by the clerk, we cannot know what has been done by the council. So I just wanna note that it is imperative that those records be accurate. And I know it sounds, as you listen to...
Oh, hang on. Pause for a minute. We gotta open the door. Someone closed it. Thanks, Brian.
I can imagine from a third-party perspective, listening to us say that, well, YouTube could decide that they're not gonna let us use it anymore, that sounds a little far-fetched. However, it is critical that we own our own record of what we're doing here. And we may not be reliant on a conglomerate to record our history. So our written history is critical.
And with Recording Secretary Scott, who takes just spectacular minutes, gives us a great record to be able to file away for history. Any other comments? So the roll call that I'm gonna have Recording Secretary Scott call will be to approve those minutes or to deny them, just to be clear on that. And also, just to be clear, the clerk didn't reach out to anyone, any city staff, about his absence tonight. So I have no idea what that's about. He reached out to me debating about whether he would come to this meeting or not, and told me via online that it would be up to, he'd reach out to every council member and find out our opinion of him coming tonight or not, and has not done so. So I have no idea where he is or what he's doing. All right, so with that, Recording Secretary Scott, roll call.
Perkins?
So to clarify, what are we voting on?
So this is, this would be, if you vote no, we're not gonna accept his minutes. If you vote yes, you're accepting his minutes.
Okay.
Got it.
Accurate?
Correct. Then no.
McAdams?
No.
Verbic?
No.
Favor?
No.
Morris?
No.
Larson?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, moving on to number two, minutes submitted by the Recording Secretary. Minutes, number A, minutes of the special joint meeting of the City Council and Finance Advisory Committee of March 14, 2022, and minutes of the regular City Council meeting of March 14, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. Roll call please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, so the minutes submitted by Recording Secretary have been approved. All right, moving on to Agenda Item H, the consent agenda. Number one, accounts payable and payroll through March 14, 2022 in the amount of $1,772,268.2. Number two, investment and bank balance summary through January 2022. Number three, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through January 2022. Number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report February 2022. And number five, Resolution 2022-029, authorizing agreement with the DeKalb Community Unit School District, number 428, to provide emergency medical services for DeKalb High School football games for the 2022 through 2023 school year. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
The consent agenda is approved. All right, Agenda Item I, public hearings, we have none. Agenda Item J, considerations. Number one, consideration of the compensation of volunteer members of DeKalb boards and commissions and committees. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. And I have a public comment for Mark Charbot during this time. As usual, you know, three minutes. Would love a measure of decorum would be phenomenal in your comments.
I'll begin my three minutes now. Regarding the item before you, it says, "No one currently employed by the city was responsible for this consideration, which came as a surprise to many. That statement is misleading." Surprise? The question is, who knew, and who knew when? On December 20th, I'm sorry, December 30, 2020, there was an email sent to the finance department. The subject line was "Commission Compensation." This is December of 2020. Between two City of DeKalb employees, importance level high. The email stated, quote, "Chris Doe," for those who don't know, was the previous commissioner, lead commissioner, "has declined compensation for her attendance of the PZC committee meeting. Is there something finance needs to, is this something finance needs to keep track of?" Also, there was an email from the finance department responding to that said, "I just looked up the vendors you've entered invoices for, the pays for the $1099 checks were imported into the BSA. W9 information wasn't available. We need information. I will need these W9s." So this information was on the record. So then, two full-time city, I'm sorry, two full-time city staff members were fully aware of these payments back in December 2020. The next question is, did the city manager know? Well, there was a memo issued to this council attached to your agenda in January of 2021, and basically, it was called Agenda Item Executive Summary, City Council Meeting, January 11, 2021. I'll submit these to Ruth for the record after the fact and email you all on this. Pages three and four listed six payments to Planning and Zoning Commission members. Now, I'm not saying whether the commission members deserve or don't deserve payments. What I'm pointing out is that at least a vast majority of this council, who was present back in January 2021, it's all but two of you, were well aware of this. This was in your backup material. If you would've read your backup material, you would've seen there were payments issued to Planning and Zoning Commission members. Again, I'm not saying whether they deserve or don't deserve payments. I'm just pointing out that you guys were all made aware of this, but nobody did their homework. Now, lastly, I wanna point out that another community member pointed out to some staff, and also, I believe, our mayor, that the Police and Fire Commission were also receiving payments. So I'm glad to see this is gonna be corrected tonight, but the problem that there's still, that's still in place here is, it still appears that the city manager will be deciding who will get payments going forward. This needs to be a council decision, since these commissions are appointed and approved by this city council. So there still needs to be some sort of official ordinance or resolution on the record determining who and when, what committee members are paid and when they're not paid. This has to be on the books.
Thank you, that's your three minutes.
That's it.
All right. City Manager.
Where to begin, huh? It's real simple. There's nothing on the books now that says these payments should occur going forward. I'm asking you for your concurrence in the judgment of the two bodies that were involved in this, the Planning and Zoning Commission and also the Fire and Police Commission, which agreed in a public meeting, separate public meetings, that they did not need the incentive to come to do their job and to do their job in between meetings. And also agreed that it would be, now that they're aware that of the 14 boards and commissions, only members of two were actually receiving some compensation, and at that, a token compensation, that how would one rank order fairly, and by what criteria, the performance of the other 12? So my recommendation to you is to stop paying them and to, as they have asked, and to not enact any compensation for the other 12 boards and commissions.
Any comments or questions, council? So you're just looking for, do we agree to remove compensation for all commission members?
It'd be hard to bring, as I said, it'd be hard to bring forward a resolution or an ordinance deciding to do something that wasn't entitled in the first place.
The books are already correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I agree. I assume we all agree that if the commissioners, and it sounds like they were all fine with not receiving compensation, that we remove compensation from our commission and committee members going forward. Okay. Oh, Alderwoman Morris?
I just wanna say I appreciate the city manager addressing this in a timely fashion after it came to our attention.
Thank you.
Need anything else? Or is that good, city manager?
That's it.
Good direction. Yeah, we would need express authorization to give the compensation, and it's not being handled by you, so there's nothing more to do than as the city manager indicated.
Perfect. All right. All right, then moving on to Agenda Item K, resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2022-030, authorizing the waiver of competitive bids and awarding a contract to Kaskaskia Engineering Group, LLC, in the lump sum amount of $400,000 for sidewalk ramp construction within the Knoll subdivision. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. We do have public participation here from Robert Bonak. Is that correct? Yeah, if you can come up, you have three minutes to be able to address the council, sir.
My name is Robert Bonak. I'm a senior engineer with Kaskaskia Engineering, and I was just offering myself for any questions that you have. Generally, there are 65 ramps in the Knoll subdivision, ADA sidewalks, ramps crossing the street that are included in the proposal for ADA compliance. So the ADA compliance consists of IDOT-accessible ramps, and the proposed right-of-way accessibility guidance are the requirements that the upgrades would follow. The 65 ramps would be replaced prior to the milling and overlay project that's proposed for this year. And essentially, the upgrades would be completed as part of the alterations to pedestrian routes, which the mill and overlay, that considers an alteration to the route. And when improvement, public improvements are made in the walkway, then you go ahead and upgrade the ramps and stuff incrementally through the project. So just a quick few minutes there, just to kinda explain what was going on for that. Kaskaskia Engineering, generally, we have nine offices throughout four states, Illinois, Missouri, Indiana, and Minnesota. We are a firm that has about 20 IDOT-qualifications. We've been in business for about 20 years, and so we work throughout the state of Illinois on projects from the Wisconsin border all the way down to the Kentucky border, and from Missouri all the way over to Indiana. Myself and Eric Lindeman here, we're located in the Geneva office, so we're about a half hour away. So we would be providing construction management and oversight for the project, engineering oversight for the project, to make sure everything's done in conformance with the regulations and requirements.
Awesome. Yeah, just if you don't mind, since you're the subject matter expert here, if you just stay at the podium?
Oh, sure.
That'd be fantastic in case more questions come up.
Right, and that was the reason why I wanted to...
Yeah, that's phenomenal. I didn't know who you were and who you were representing.
Oh, sure.
So that's great. Appreciate it. City Manager?
Thank you. And we're pleased that Kaskaskia is responsive to our interest at this time. So the funding for the project, the gentleman has explained to you, is coming from the grant that we got in the amount of $1.4 million back, or we were awarded in 2020 and received in 2021 from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And about $1 million of that grant was used for the design and the early phases of construction of Afton Road, which is running north and south along the east border of the Meta Project, and that replaces a piece of Creago Road that was incorporated into the Meta campus. So one of the conditions of that grant was that there would be involvement on the part of disadvantaged business enterprise firms, DVE firms, in either the design or construction. We did not have a response when we were looking for such firms as we were going out, as we went out to bid about a year ago for Afton Road, but it's imperative that we do work with a DVE-qualified firm at this point to do some of the work that is involved in the remainder of that grant. Now, the work that is planned for the Knolls for the year exceeds this amount that's going to be dedicated toward the concrete ramps, replacements, and the compliance work. But we thought it was critical that we go ahead and waive competitive bids in this case and award the grant to Kaskaskia in the amount of, not to, a lump sum amount of $400,000.
Council, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Resolution 2022-030 passes. Robert, thanks for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
We appreciate the opportunity to work with your municipality.
You betcha. Have a great night. And like I've told others, feel free to leave. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's okay. All right, moving on to number two, Resolution 2022-031, authorizing an engineering services agreement with Fairgram and Associates, LLC, for construction engineering of 2,800 feet of water main on North 13th Street in an amount not to exceed $51,500. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager?
Thank you. As you know, we've got two big projects in the third ward this summer, and one is the 13th Street Water Main, and that, for the actual construction, a ward was given to Performance Engineering last council meeting. This is for the engineering work and also the field supervision of the contractors that are gonna be working on this. The bid was not to exceed $51,500. Obviously, it's not just for design. A good part of that is for the actual construction supervision, and this is well within the standards that are set for percentages of costs. So Zach Gill has recommended that we proceed with this, and I support his recommendation.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Resolution 2022-031 passes. All right, moving on to... There we go. Number three, Resolution 2022-032, awarding a bid to Performance Construction Engineering in the amount of $1,027,731 for 3,139 feet of water main replacement on North 14th Street between Clark Street and Dresser Road, with staff authority to approve change orders up to $1,063,701. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager?
Similar kind of project, but a longer road, and so a larger amount. And the company that is the lowest responsible bidder was also the lowest responsible bidder on 13th Street and... on 13th Street, and it's probably in the long run going to work in terms of, of the mechanics of when things start, when things finish, pretty well for the city, but there were four bidders, and they came in as the low responsible bidder, and once again, we're, we're looking for staff authority to approve change orders. In this case, the amount is $1,063,701, and that's what's before you tonight. We recommend you support it.
Council, questions, comments? Lot of great improvements we're going to be doing.
Yeah.
Going to keep you busy, Zach. If Zach's still here, I think he's here. He only was here, there he is. Oh, there you go. Yeah, it's just exciting, especially for the 13th and 14th street areas. Long overdue, and it's nice to be able to finally be able to start addressing a lot of this.
That's actually a Zach clone in the back. We're going to need three or four of those, I think.
Exactly. All right, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Resolution 2022-032 passes. All right, moving on to Agenda Item number four, Resolution 2022-033, authorizing an engineering services agreement with Faragam and Associates, LLC, for construction engineering of 3,136 feet of water main on North 14th Street in an amount not to exceed $61,900. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faber. City Manager?
As you know, from a couple of meetings ago, Faragam's on our pre-qualified list. It makes sense that they would be given a shot to go back and forth. These, these roads are not very far apart, and it'd be very, much more efficient for us to have them doing this. Zach had discussed the scope with them. They're very much aware of what the details are, so we recommend that you support their involvement in this project.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Resolution 2022-033 passes. All right, moving on to number five, Resolution 2022-034, approving an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the DeKalb Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, number 115, Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council, Article 5, Holidays, Section 8, Base Holiday Entitlement, and Section B, Holiday Accrual for New Members. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager?
Thank you. Article 5 has a number of sections in it. The first two deal with holiday accrual for, for members. One is for new members coming in, and then the other is for continuing members of the, of the labor group and, who are signatory to, to the FOP contract. And we've changed it from 112 to 120. It's an eight-hour difference, and that's what we're doing. You may recall, when we talked about this last year, we estimated that the overall cost of the city for all the employees who would benefit from the, the holiday was just under $20,000. Don't, there was a, and then anticipated the pay increase this year that was in the contract, and I, I don't believe that has changed, so we recommend your approval of this on, on the sentiment and the principle that was articulated last year.
Council? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, Resolution 2022-034 passes. All right, moving on to Agenda Item L, Ordinances, second reading. We have none tonight. And Agenda Item M, Ordinances, first reading. Number one, Ordinance 2022-015, amending Chapter 38, Intoxicating Liquors, Section 38.01, Definitions, and Section 38.27, Gambling Devices, as it pertains to video gaming terminal operators. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This was tabled at the last regular meeting, so it's up before you again for first reading, and it could be considered on second reading tonight if that was the council's pleasure. Matthew Rose, our city attorney, and I have pursued a conversation with some of the local establishments and their councils since that meeting, and we wanted some time, some additional time to do that, and thanks to you, we were able to do that. What we have here, I feel, is a, a reasonable position for the city to maintain. In effect, as I say in the background, the annual license fee will be doubled from $250 to $500 per terminal, although we're requiring the terminal operator to have a share in that, 50% share in that. So in effect, the, that cost will not go up for the local establishment. It's always been a matter of some negotiation, a private negotiation, as to whether the terminal operators expect anything. Some pay it all, some pay none, some pay 50%. We're setting a standard here if people want to do business in, in our community. And then there's a non-refundable application fee, which will be $1,000 per establishment. Again, it's expected that the terminal operator and the local establishment will equally share that cost, so with, in brief, our fees will be doubled, but the local establishment should not bear any additional cost if they want to remain an operator of those types of machines. And I realize there's a bigger conversation here having to do with, we want to expand the number of establishments or, or contract those. That will come to the council as a separate matter.
Alderwoman Morris, were you and I?
Do I have a question?
Yeah.
Um, I'm trying to understand how, so it's split between the terminal operator and the local establishment?
Right.
So...
So the, the representatives of the companies that, that provide these, the terminal operator would, would have to pay half going forward. And then the local establishments who, you know, receive them, set them up, use them in their, in their establishment.
Oh, I see. Okay. So as you make, once it gets to 500, the local establishment is still paying its same exact amount of 250. I get it, I get it. Thanks.
Yeah, because that last sentence was confusion. Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, I was, I was.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, Ordinance 2022-015 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments on that? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, second reading for Ordinance 2022-015 has been waived. All right, moving on to Agenda Item N, Reports and Communications. Alderman McAdams, you want to kick us off?
So last week, we went down to Springfield, a contingent of the city, and spoke with legislators about economic development and about opportunities for cannabis licenses for DeKalb, and I thought it was a very productive day of service, and I, I was very pleased to go down there and spend time with our local representatives in Springfield, and I thought that it was a time well spent by the council members.
Awesome. Alderman Faber? I know, changing it up. Got to keep you on your toes.
So last week was the airport advisory board meeting. The meetings are open to the public. They're the fourth Tuesday of every, of every month at 7:00 PM in the main hangar. This past meeting was, you know, attended by the mayor, city manager, and fellow aldermen, and the, the purpose of the meeting was to actually go over the airport strategy development, and it was a great meeting to talk about the, the strengths that we have here in the DeKalb Airport, any opportunities that we should be considering for the airport. So it was, it was very productive, several, you know, whiteboard just full of ideas of, you know, what to look at, so the next step is to prioritize, which we'll be doing at the next meeting. And then I was going to say, you know, the, the weather's warmed up, the snow is gone, so, you know, if you're out on a walk, bring a plastic bag with you. I'm sure there's some trash that got away on these windy days we had last week, and so just pick that up. And then the final thing is, the seventh ward, I'll be, I'll be having a ward meeting. I'm hoping to try and get something scheduled for April, so there'll be more information coming on that. Thank you.
Awesome. Alderman Verbic?
I attended the last school board meeting. Very informative, a number of good conversations out and about, a lot of things going on out there. Nothing else to report than that, though.
Okay. Alderman Perkins?
I'll report.
Alderwoman Larson?
I was fortunate to visit the last two fire stations, House Two and Three, and see how they're making do with some small spaces, especially when you start getting co-ed firefighters out there, but everything looks great, and it was great to see that we've got power washers out on the streets and, because I know my house looks terrible, so I'm glad that somebody is cleaning up the rest of the city and getting some of those, the grime taken care of, so. That's it.
Alderwoman Morris?
I don't think I shared about the Economic Development Commission after our last meeting. So we, I am the liaison to the Economic Development Commission. They meet every other month on the first Friday of the month at 8:30 in the morning. And so we had a meeting most recently, and we're assessing what direction the Economic Development Commission should take moving forward and what their, yeah, what their goals should be. So looking at that, I shared that I'm also serving on the Governor's Military and Economic Development Commission. I think I have that right, lots of words. So it's the lieutenant governors, and so it's a really cool opportunity to connect with the lieutenant governor at the state level and to be able to share our community's concerns with them and vice versa, and bring that information here.
Awesome. Myself, just real quick, I had the awesome experience with the city manager of touring the Facebook data center. So we got a complete walkthrough. It's not completed yet. I guess completion is still a ways off, just because of the scale of this thing, but it was really incredible, and talking with Mortensen and being able to see how they operate and what they're constructing is, is so impressive. Talk about a great contractor and a great company to have in our community. And right after that, attended and spoke at an event where they reach out to the community, and this time, they had six candidates of people that may never have gotten an opportunity to be able to get into the trades or even understand what that really means, and put them through an eight-week program, and the unions agreed, and they're all going to, I don't know what their terms, correct term, but apprentice now in the trades and work on this particular project. So that just shows the character of this organization, and I thought that was really cool, and it was fun to meet some of them and hear their, their background and their experiences. Also, yeah, the airport was phenomenal. That was, that was great dialogue. I can't wait to see how that, you know, you know, evolves over time and the impact it makes out at the airport. So a lot of just wonderful people out there, a lot of stakeholders that just want to see what's best for the airport and best for the community. Also, just to touch on what Alderman McAdams was saying when we went down to Springfield, we met with a bunch of representatives from Keiker to Demmer to Yednok, who will be our new state rep, well, actually, when the election happens, since he's running for treasurer, I guess, I don't know if he will be our new state rep, but would be if, if the boundaries were applied right now. McComby, and then Ford as well, and had a lot of their time and a lot of their ear on multiple issues, and even one, they called us back as we were eating lunch, because they got the stakeholders in the room, and we were able to have a great meeting and escalate a conversation advocating for more economic development in our community. And that happened specifically because of Demmer, Keiker, and Yednok, which was awesome. And I got a call out, Representative Keiker really opened up Springfield for us, hand-walked us to offices, introduced us directly to representatives for issues that we had. It was, it was pretty incredible to see someone that's going to lose a large chunk of DeKalb as his territory at the redistricting, spending as much time with the district he represents right now. So that was, that was incredible, and I got a, sent a personal thank you to Representative Keiker on that. That's all I got. So what about you, city manager?
I also enjoyed that, that trip. I think DeKalb made its presence known, and we had a number of issues to discuss and on a number of bills that are probably going to be pending here in the next month or two. And I appreciate being with you and helping, and I appreciate Ruth Scott for setting up the itinerary for it.
It was an awesome agenda, yeah.
Very good job. Thank you.
It was neat. I, I didn't know what to expect, but actually, people governing, making it the priority, serving others. That was cool to see.
And also civil.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Surprising level of civility.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah, definitely. Anything else, city manager?
Well, thank you.
All right. With that, hang on. If you guys are wondering why I keep shuffling around, I stapled my agenda on the right side, not the left side, so it just doesn't seem natural the way I'm turning pages. All right, so with that, all right, moving on to executive session, Agenda Item O, number one, approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss personnel as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C1. Can I get a motion to hold an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman, Alderwoman Morris. Motion, or, sorry, oh, roll call, yeah.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, so the regular meeting is now in recess, and we will move into closed session. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It was great seeing y'all. Keep up the great work.